I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Calhous Parish Police Jury for Thursday, April 20th, 2023. Would ask that you please take a moment to silence your cell phones. If you wish to speak on any item on the agenda tonight, there is a blue slip that you need to fill out that you'll find at the table there at the front of the room, and you can hand it to anyone here at the staff table. So we're gonna have the invocation and pledge allegiance by Mr. Barti. Please stand.
Most gracious and holy Father, we just thank you, Lord. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. And Father, we ask that as we make decisions this evening, Heavenly Father, that each and every decision we make is pleasing in your sight. And Lord, it is our prayer that the true Spirit of service would rule our hearts, guide our thoughts, and control our minds, so that one day we may be come through you, servants of all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Barti. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Vice President Brain?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentale?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
Mr. Tremonte?
Here.
And President Landry?
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine.
You're welcome.
Item 1's at 5:45. We will come back to that. Item 2A, appearance by Mr. Mark Judson, candidate for 14th Judicial District Court Judge. Mr. Judson, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mark Judson. I live at 1722 Enterprise Boulevard, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70601. I appreciate the opportunity to come and briefly inform the police jury that I am a candidate for Calhous Parish Family Court Judge. And I want you all to know it, and I want you all to be aware of it as leaders of our parish. A little bit of information about me, I am a Republican. I am married to Sarah McLeod Judson. For those of you with hair my color, you may know that she is the daughter of the deceased Bill McLeod and Sissy McLeod. They were my in-laws. We have one daughter, Rachel. I am 59 years old. If the people will have me, I have 15 years of potential eligibility as our next family court judge. Been practicing law for 30 years, mostly in Calhous Parish, mostly in family court. My mentors, I started with the late Henry Yelverton at the Third Circuit Court of Appeal, had the good opportunity to work for David Painter. David Painter was a lawyer, city councilman, district court judge, and appellate court judge. And through hard work and determination, I became the number two lawyer in Painter Law Firm. Now y'all get one guess as to how many lawyers there were in Painter Law Firm. I was the number two guy. What was interesting about David is that he was adopted as a new baby in 1937, and that inspired him in part to do a lot of new baby adoption practice. And I say new baby to distinguish that from intra-family adoption. Intra-family adoptions are stepparent adoptions, grandparent adoptions, things like that. Those are important, but the lawyers and the courts are legalized in a relationship that's already there. In the new baby adoption, lawyer plays a major role in creating the relationship. You're assisting a birth mother in doing the ultimate act of love, placing a child with hopeful adoptive parents. And that inspired me to kind of go on and do some, a career in family law. I also had the good fortune to be the executive director of the Southwest Louisiana Law Center. The Southwest Louisiana Law Center is a nonprofit law firm, help the under-resourced with civil, legal needs, charge money, sliding scale, low bono, not pro bono, all right? This police jury supports the law center through the law library and through other arrangements. It was a unique opportunity for a lawyer to get to see the under-resourced and their civil, legal needs. I learned a lot. I learned that legal problems are often symptomatic of a larger problem, right? And so I learned by working with multiple expert agencies throughout the parish, that the best way to solve the legal problem was with the larger holistic problem. So with collaborative and holistic approaches, we were able to do a lot of good at the Southwest Louisiana Law Center. And if elected, I would bring a holistic, collaborative, community-wide approach to handling matters at the, at the family court. And I think that might make me a little bit better choice for candidate for judge. So I wanted to advise you all of that. I asked for your consideration. For those of you who can vote for me, I asked for your vote. It's a little bizarre map. This is the district that I'm running out of. Judges serve the entire parish, but for election purposes only, for election purposes only, they run out of sub-districts. In this colored area, it's Moss Bluff, Westlake, Drew Park, St. Louis Catholic High School, west of Elliott Road, south of Goche Road, mostly, Bell City and Hayes. Those are the areas I'm running out of. It's 37 precincts, 45,000 registered voters. I wanted to inform you all of that, and I ask for your consideration. And I appreciate you letting me speak to you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Judson. Are there any questions for Mr. Judson?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
2B, presentation of a certificate to Mr. Jacob Jewell, Sam Houston High School senior in recognition of his national documentary about Louisiana coastal restoration. I'm gonna ask Tom if you could play the video.
Hurricanes. When we think the destruction that they bring, we typically think of wind or water damage. We forget one of the most severe impacts a hurricane can bring that can affect a region for years to come, coastal erosion. It's something Scooter Traskler, the Rockefeller Wildlife Refuge Manager in Cameron Parish, says he sees every day.
Just in the short period of time of me being involved here since 1990 at Rockefeller, we've lost 3,600 feet of shoreline, which is incredible. If you think of the 3,600 feet of land, if it still existed as a hurricane moves inland, that land is gonna reduce the power of that storm to where the communities further north, instead of experiencing 130 miles an hour, they may just experience a 90 mile an hour wind, which makes a huge difference.
Ever to increase our coastal protection are already being made through the Just Imagine Establea Project founded by everyday people in the community. I spoke with Butch Gidry at the Cameron Parish Police Jury about how these projects like building new reinforced levees can affect the future of our region.
Cameron Parish is gonna always be your first line of defense against the coastal erosion and what will happen if we don't do something about it. These levees will keep coastal erosion from washing away the rest of our parish and going on in and destroying the southern end of Calhous Parish.
Now, protecting our coastline doesn't just mean protecting communities. It means protecting the multi-billion dollar LNG industry here in Southwest Louisiana. I spoke with Bart Jacobsak, who serves on the Community Foundation Board, about Southwest Louisiana's booming LNG industry.
Cameron Parish alone is now the world's leader in LNG liquefied natural gas export. And without Cameron Parish, without that coastline protected, that industry, that participation in the global economy will disappear. What we need is America to recognize how important protecting that coastline is, not merely because of the amount of people, but because of what goes on north of that coastline.
With strong and intense hurricanes becoming more and more common, it's now more important than ever to protect our coast, to save our region, and a global economy from disaster.
We're gonna keep pursuing this. We will build these levees. We will have these pumps, these weirs, these water control structures. It's coming. We gotta do it. We gotta save our parish.
If we do not do anything in order to protect our way of life, our cultures, it could all fade away very quickly.
I'm pleased to introduce to you Mr. Jacob Jewell. Jacob is a senior at Sam Houston High School and the College Street Vocational Center. Jacob created this documentary titled "The Forgotten Coast," which won second place in the National C-SPAN Student Cam Contest out of more than 1,500 submissions. The documentary you just saw, the need for the coastal infrastructure, efforts to protect or restore our critical coastlines in Southwest Louisiana. With Jacob this evening is Tony McCockendale, who is the Director of the Career and Technical Education for CPSB, as well as Jacob's TV production teacher, Ms. Brittany Glazer. Tony, Mr. Tony here, and Ms... I'm gonna present this certificate of recognition to you, Jacob, for the job you've been doing at Calhous Parish, this police jury, this administration.
You're correct. Thank you, Mr. Richard. I had read about that the other day. I appreciate you putting that on, on the agenda. Very interesting. I think he has a great career ahead of him, I believe. We'll go to 3A, approved applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends one special event permit and one renewal. Application be approved. Got a motion by Mr. Abshar, second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3B, take appropriate action on the following application, 3166 Highway 3059 in Ward 3 to rezone from A1 agriculture to I1 light industrial to allow industrial development to contractors' office, shop, and storage yard. I have a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Markentale, to approve with stipulations. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting. The police jury dated March 23rd, 2023. Motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4B, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of property located in the 900 block of Ryan Street from the Mary Hollands Testimentary Trust. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly, a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5A, adopt an ordinance approving the purchase of property located at 621 Sundell Drive in Lake Charles through funding received from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5B, adopt an ordinance approving the purchase of property located at 7883 Gulf Highway in Lake Charles through funding received from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. I have a motion by Mr. Richard, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Go ahead and finish. 5C, adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the police jury and Water Works District Number 5 of Wards 3 and 8, and Water Works District Number 12 of Ward 3, and Water Works District Number 8 of Wards 3 and 8, acknowledging and approving the consolidation of said Water Works District. I have a motion by Mr. Markentale, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now go back to number 1. Hold a public hearing at 5:45 PM as a result of notice provided to the owners of the properties described below, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. And again, if anyone needs to speak, do we have some blue cards? Okay, that one I think we're already aware of. Okay. 1A, 1868 Marlin Road in Moss Bluff. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on 1A, 1868 Marlin Road in Moss Bluff? I have a motion to condemn and remove within 30 days by Mr. Richard, and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1B, 558 Moore Road in Moss Bluff. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1B, 558 Moore Road in Moss Bluff?
Move to condemn.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Richard to condemn or move in 30 days, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1C, 308 Pretium Road in Lake Charles.
Move to condemn.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hayes to condemn, and a second by Mr. Markentale, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there anyone in the audience that's here to speak on number 1C, 308 Pretium Road? Okay, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1D, 2431 Salmon Street in Lake Charles. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on 1D, 2431 Salmon Street in Lake Charles?
Move to condemn.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hayes, and a second by Mr. Markentale, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1E, 2408 Green Lawn Street in Lake Charles. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1E, 2408 Green Lawn Street in Lake Charles?
Move to condemn and
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brain to condemn and remove in 30 days, and a second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1F, 8951 Gulf Highway in Lake Charles?
Move to condemn. I mean, I move to defer for 30 days.
Yes, we, and I think, do we have, is that the one we had?
We do have a speaker?
We do, but yeah, I don't think that they need to speak, because we're going to, to give them some time. We have a motion by Mr. Brain to defer for 30 days, and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? And also, I guess, do you still wish to speak on 8951 Gulf Highway? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Defere for 30 days, correct, Mr. Brain?
Yes.
1G, 9248 Gulf Highway in Lake Charles?
Move to defer for 30 days.
We have a motion by Mr. Brain to defer for 30 days, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on 9248 Gulf Highway? Okay, if you need to speak, you're gonna have to come to the podium. I don't, I think we're good.
I was just saying that we don't need to speak.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion to defer for 30 days. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1H, 7572 Copper Leaf Drive in Lake Charles? Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 7572 Copper Leaf Drive? Number 1H. Mr. Barris?
How do we know who them people were? What did they just say? Hey, man, let's go tell them we don't need to talk and?
Well, because they live in my district and
Oh, you know.
We've been in, they've been in contact with Mr. Crane's office.
Not like wedding crashers, but you know, condemnation crashers.
Yeah. On 1F and 1G, they're both in my district, and they've both been in, in contact with the planning department and myself, so.
Serve your district.
Mr. Brain, help, help me out with the motions. So now we're on 1H, 7572 Copper Leaf Drive. And was there anyone in the audience to speak on that item, number 1H, 7572 Copper Leaf Drive? Okay, we had a motion by Mr. Markentale, second by Mr. Lewis, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1I, 100 Herford Drive in Topsy. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on 1I, 100 Herford Drive in Topsy?
Motion to condemn.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Markentale, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1J, 102 Herford Drive in Topsy.
Move to condemn.
Is there anyone here in the audience that's here to speak on 1J, 102 Herford Drive in Topsy? I have a motion by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Richard, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1K, 3584 St. Luke Lane in Sulphur. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1K, 3584 St. Luke Lane in Sulphur?
Move on 1K.
I have a motion by Mr. Markentale, second by Mr. Hayes, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1L, 1930 Jacobson Road in Carless. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1L, 1930 Jacobson Road in Carless? I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
I just got a question real quick.
Mr. Barris?
So, just the detached building is going away? And the other stuff is just part of a, just a cleanup?
Well, what it is, is this is a detached garage. Someone does live in the house. The house is occupied.
Okay.
So we're just condemning the detached garage.
All righty.
You okay, Mr. Barr?
So move.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on 1L, 1930 Jacobson Road in Carless? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Burley, to condemn and remove within 30 days. The detached garage building only. Correct. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1M, 2768 Avondale Street in Sulphur. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1M, 2768 Avondale Street in Sulphur?
Move on 1M.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Markentale, second by?
Mr. Richard.
Mr. Richard. Are you sure, Mr. Brain?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was about five of them.
I thought there was more than one.
They know him.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. All right, is there any discussion? Any objections? See, now you got me all out of rhythm there. I don't even remember. Is there anyone here to speak on 1M, 2768 Avondale Street in Sulphur? I might have already done that, but just in case we did it twice, because Mr. Gabb would not be happy if I didn't say that. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, motion carries, and the motion was to condemn and remove in 30 days. 1N, 3949 Old Spanish Trail Mossfield. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on 1N, 3949 Old Spanish Trail Mossfield? I have a motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Stelly, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1O, 2664 Miller Avenue in Westlake. Is there anyone here to speak on 1O, 2664 Miller Avenue in Westlake? I have a motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Barti, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1P, 2305 Galen Drive in Sulphur.
Move to condemn.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1P, 2305 Galen Drive in Sulphur? I had a motion by Mr. Tremonti, a second by Mr. Markentale, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1Q, 3936 Wright Road in Carless.
Move to condemn.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1Q, 3936 Wright Road in Carless? Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, a second by Mr. Markentale, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
6A.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. 6A, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of the local regional combined workforce plan. I had a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Mr. Gilery? You good?
I'm good.
Thank you. You look good. You look nice tonight. Is there any discussion? Any objections?
I like to have discussions.
Yeah, we'll save that.
Got him looking good.
We'll save that. Well, he does look nice, don't you think? His, his mother thinks so.
Dabber. Dabber even.
Any further discussion? Hearing, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6B, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of the certification package for the Workforce Development Board. We have a motion by Mr. Gilery, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7A, adopt a resolution approving an agreement for participation in the Title IV E Federal Foster Care Reimbursement Program. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 8A, approve payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly and/or quarterly budget to actual comparisons. I had a motion by Mr. Abshar, and a, and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any, is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. I'm looking out for you, Big Mike.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Even though you didn't wear your hat tonight, I'm very disappointed, but 8B, action on bids for bulk oil. Staff recommends the bids of Delta Fuel Company LLC, Lard Oil Company Inc., Miguez Fuel and Lubrications, and Reladine Pompelli Oil Acquisition LLC be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Barti, and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
We do. Mr. Abshar beat you, we are adjourned.